We're starting over.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting for the Public Site and Building Commission order at 7:02 PM. Please join in the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag. So we just have a court, so we can really only discuss, we only have police business discussed. Obviously Nancy is not with us tonight, she's away. And John Kurner contacted me a little while ago. And they had a significant water main break at one of the schools in Stanford. So he's out there plugging pipes up what are they doing? And trying to get tomorrow. So it'll be relatively a short meeting. Before we start, Nancy did send out a notice they're having a, if anybody wants to attend, a seminar on public information here. It's opened up any board or commission member who would like to attend. If they so wish to. It's gonna be held, I don't have the date in front of me. You remember the voice, yeah?
I don't.
February 5th.
February what?
I thought it was February 5th.
February 5th, yes. So just again, check your emails if you would like to attend. It's probably a good thing to learn about FOI and how it works.
February 5th.
February 5th? Seven, 7:00 PM, February 5th, here at the municipal center. All right. Is there any public comment? Any public comment?
No, no public.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. So the next item on the business will be the police station.
Actually do the minutes.
What's, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the last ones minutes. I forgot. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Any votes in seconds, is there any additional deletions from that? Anybody has to abstain from voting? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carry. All right, I'm sorry. It's been a while since I ran the meeting. Police station. What do you got for us, Evan? I hope you got a lot of great news.
Yeah, so last Thursday, Nancy, Lieutenant Durkin and I went out and did a site visit, walked through, saw the progress that both Downs and Action Target was making. You know, we did see that there was some misses in coordination that was happening. So we did ask that Downs up their presence a little bit. We saw that Downs had a little bit in their own contingency left over. So we saw that, we thought that we could ask Downs to utilize that contingency by having their supervisor on site one or two hours a day extra per week. And just kind of track that against their contingency for the next couple of weeks to make sure we don't have those shifts in the night kind of, kind of misses. And it would be well worth it to have their contingency spent that, that way rather than having a big blow up in the change order. So we gave Downs that direction. And since then, you know, Kevin's been able to get us, he's on a couple of occasions, you know, send me an email early in the morning, I've been able to relate the, the questions or issues over to Action Target. And Action Target has been able to get a response out to us by the afternoon. So it's been working, it's been paying dividends. So I think it's, it's been a effort well spent. There's we've also, as you saw, we had the two proposals finalized. The scopes work were finalized for low voltage and the security vendors. So we'll look at those proposals later on. And hopefully be able to get those approved. If network synergy is approved, they'll be able to get out there next Tuesday. I'll meet them out, out on site next Tuesday and, and get them going. Security vendor Signet will probably be a little bit longer, they probably won't be able to get out there until the first week of February. And I think that the only other open item we have right now is we have Open RFI number 11 that Downs sent out to Chikonski Humes yesterday. But that does not look like at this point in time that it would have a cost implication to it. It's simply a code issue in clearances on the sprinkler heads.
How, how is the work coming along with actual, what Action Target has, their, their end of the work, their scope of the work?
They're moving along pretty quickly. They're, they're hanging up their, their baffles at a good pace. And you know, we just really need to make sure that we coordinate correctly with the installation of the sprinkler piping and the lighting and, and then finally the low voltage to make sure that we're providing them with all that they need for their controls.
Do we have an estimated end date or completion date?
February 15th.
February, I'm sorry?
February 15th.
February 15th, great.
Does that, so, does that look okay as far as 15th, Adam, or Evan?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and Kevin, you might have heard more as far as, I know that they had a couple more pallets to move in. And some warmer weather coming in next week as far as getting that masonry done. So I don't know if you've been able to coordinate that.
Well, that, that's one of the things I asked David Johnson for is that the guys in their, in the field were saying that they were ready for the, the wall to be infilled where we have the temp opening. But before, but before I pull the trigger and get the mason out there, I want David just to kind of give us the blessing. So, you know, I just want to make sure he's on the same page as the guys in the field. I'm sure it's fine, but you know, once the wall's up, you know, we can't get anything else back in there through that entry point, so.
Yeah.
But the mason, I mean, he's, he's on board, he's been accommodating, so I'm sure once I give him like a couple days' notice, he should have no problem getting out there. And if we have a stretch of warm weather coming up, I mean, that's the perfect time to do it, so we don't have to, you know, go into any kind of winter conditions or anything like that. And then we can coat it and the exterior should be wrapped up.
Good.
Lieutenant Durkin, do you have, are there any concerns from the police department's end of the project at this time?
No, nothing at all, looks like it's coming along pretty good. As far as Target's doing, so hopefully, you know, the electricians and the people that are doing the makeup area, and hopefully that all falls into place as well.
And how, how are we doing, Evan or Kevin, with the, with all of the, the air handling equipment? Is that pretty much all set now or all piped in and secured?
So they're still working on that. As of last Thursday, when we were out there, Downs was setting the the gravel bases that we had approved. You know, they're out there chipping away at that frozen ground so they could place that exterior ductwork. And they were also placing the exhaust at the, where they're firing. You know, behind where they fire at the range. And so on the interior, I think that was the last piece that they had to do on the interior. But, and then they just had to go back outside once Downs had finished up out there.
Anybody from the commission have any concerns or questions for Evan or Kevin now about the project? You know, just for clarifications, Dave?
Sorry, I came into the party late here. Yeah. Let me think about this for a minute, okay, all right.
Hey. Hey, John, and just, just for Evan, do you, do you see any holdups, Evan, as far as going forward to making that, that date as far as the 15th?
Uh, no, uh, I'm, I'm optimistic and we have a call tomorrow with the commissioning agent as well.
Okay.
So we're getting them on board. I'm, I'm hoping that, I do have, Mark has replied, Mark, I don't know if you forwarded that to, to Colorado. If anybody from Colorado is gonna be able to join that, on that. We have people from Performance that are gonna be on there, people from Action Target are gonna be on there. So, you know, that'll, that'll be a good team to get the commissioning agent rolling. So that'll definitely be a good start there. And I, I think that, you know, the biggest question that we, that I really have for our Action Target that I really have not been able to get clarification on them is who's actually coming out there to train the police department? Because I don't believe it's the guys that are installing this. You know, who's coming out to do this final? There's gotta be somebody who installs the computer system and calibrates it and trains, you know, Lieutenant Durkin and Lieutenant Libertini on how to use this. And I, I haven't gotten an answer on that. So that, that's, and I'm hoping that that's gonna happen, you know, when construction is done. I'm hoping that's gonna happen on, you know, middle of February and not in April.
So to add on to what, I'm sorry to interrupt, but to add on to what Evan's saying. So for commissioning, can we get a copy of the MOP? Or SOM, or what do they call it? I'd like to see how detailed it is. And also to your point, Evan, on the training, there should be a MOP or a SOM of some kind that does a step-by-step and is a, in a binder that they hand off at the end of the day that, here you go, here's your, if this happens, do this, if, if this fails, do that. And, you know, something along those lines. And I'd like to see what Action Target actually has for that because let's face it, once they're gone, they're gone. And, you know, Lieutenant Durkin, Lieutenant Libertini, and whoever else is gonna be involved with training along those lines will need a very detailed and with pictures, I would imagine as well of what to do, you know, and how to handle it.
Yeah, and this is all stuff that we need for our our health department as well. That's all stuff that Laura has said that we need for our final blessing from that Bethel Health Department. So we, we know and we've been requesting that for, from all of our mechanical subcontractors throughout.
The other question, Evan, we talked about the last meeting, how are we making out with every source? Any, any more moving on that?
Yeah, I actually spoke with them on, on Monday of this week. And they told me that we are in the queue, we're in progress. There's not much that we could do right now, but we are, we're there. There's nothing else we could do, but there's also nothing we can do. It's just, it's just bureaucracy.
Mark, from Downs, do you have anything, I mean, from Jones, Jonesy Humes or Kevin, do you have anything you want to add or?
No, I think Evan hit the, the, you know, the, the main points. There's some level of coordination that our electrician has with the low voltage vendor, but I, I don't foresee any kind of issues with that. You know, the fire protection guys, they had to do a little rework because Action Target took it upon themselves to kind of move their sprinkler lines when they were installing the baffles, so it's something we worked through. But it was, it was an extra to the fire protection subcontractor because it was reworked. So we're tracking that. But beyond that, I don't foresee any kind of issues at this point.
Great.
Does that mean that there's gonna be a change order on that, or is that? That's something that I think we can fund it through our CM contingency.
Well, we could charge it back to Action Target.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, it's, it's a, yeah, however we want to handle it, but as far as, you know, processing the change for our subcontractor, I think the path of least resistance just to make him whole is to fund our CM contingency and then we can work something behind the scenes to give Action Target the bill and they can kind of reimburse the town or however we want to handle it. But yeah, I agree that they should be held liable for this rework.
Okay.
Let's make sure we have documentation on that as we can.
Absolutely. Yep, we have photos, we documented, we let David Johnson of Action Target know, so he, he's well aware of what happened. So we'll go from there.
Very good.
Yep, that was it on my end.
Do you, y'all have anything they want to add or questions before we move on? Sounds like we're making some, finally making some real good progress here and hopefully we can achieve that date of, you know, February 15th. That would be ideal. All, all good news. All good news. Anything else? All right. I guess we have a, from synergy, we have a, is that a quote, do we, do we approve that money already, Evan, for that synergy, for that, we have to approve this quote?
Uh, so the network synergy, we had a, we said it was contingently approved last time based on our conversation with Action Target to make sure that it was the full scope. When I went out and talked with them, we had missed a couple of data ports, so that's why I went up by about $400. So we talked about a 525 last time and it went up to $1,900.
So we're gonna have to reapprove this?
Yeah, so it was never, it was, yeah, it was contingent approval, but it was never given to Dan Carter for for signature.
All right. So, let's do this. Do you have that? Okay, you have it, okay, good. Maybe you can give us a quick rundown of what some of the add-ons were or what the missed points were?
Yeah, sure, so it's still the same patch panel and switch which are required for the length of run from the server room that is in the main PD building. And then, so all the other expenses that were now added now is these, these jacks, these faceplates. Before, all we had was the switch and the patch panel and, whoops. Sorry. Wireless access port. So then we added this stuff down here and because all these need to be manually wired in, we went from four hours to six hours of labor. So that went up by $300. So that's how we.
Those were all add-ons, those were part of the original, was it missed in the original scope or is that just something that was just added on at the end?
What's that?
I'm sorry, was that added on at the end or was that something that was missed in the original scope?
It was added on in the end because it was, because we had my understanding of the scope when I originally walked through did not include those. And then when I walked through again with Action Target, they said, oh no, we need this and this as well. So we had to have them added on.
Okay.
I mean, I look at the thing here, you know, the, the hull accelerator is $24. The additional plates are $11.25. CAT 6 ethernet cables, patch cables, $11. Shipping cost 40 and of course we have labor, $900.
Right, so the, the main cost increase is in that the hour, the man, the man hour is going from four to six.
Yeah, yeah.
It's $1,931.
The voltage's our budget.
Oh, our, our budget was 7,500.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're good. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the change order or the price call for additional work for network synergy. It is quote number SB 1007967 for the total amount of $1,931.25. Second by Jerrosh. Is there any more discussion on this?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry, beautiful.
Doing this like a pro, John.
What's that?
So you're doing this like a pro.
That's my pro, all right. All right, I guess, we have any other change orders or quote, work to go over?
Yeah, so we also have the proposal from Signet which is the access control for the exterior door.
What, what quote number is that, I can't read it, it's there, I couldn't print this one out, it's right too.
Sure, so it's 38343.
Three, okay. And how much is that one for then?
And it's $9,869.83.
What was our budget?
$10,000.
Wow. Just enough.
Somebody tell them the budget number?
What do you mean by that? All righty. This is from Signet, I'd like to make a motion that we approve quote number 38343 dated 11824 for the amount of $9,869.83.
I just want to ask, do you think this is the last of surprises with this one? Because since we're so close to the top end of the budget on it?
Yeah, they spent a couple hours out there really making sure that they knew exactly what they were doing.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to have them turn around and say, oh yeah, we forgot something, here's another $2,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this discussion? If not, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? So carry. Nice. All right, I guess we have two invoices to deal with.
So the first one is ESC, who's your controls contractor? This is invoice number 1191462.
All right, and this is already encumbered money, correct?
Correct.
So, again, I'd like to make a motion that we approve restful payment invoice number 1191462 dated on 11024 for the amount of $14,475.
Couple of quick questions on this one. Does this include commissioning and all that, or is this, there's still a commissioning expense that comes with this?
ESC is not doing the commissioning, CES is doing the commissioning.
I'm sorry, but they should be there during the commissioning, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so they, yeah, they will be part of the meeting tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a second on this, Mark, somebody?
I'll second it.
Is, is any, any other discussion? All right, so again, this is encumbered money and according to this, the remaining contract to be billed left is still $18,005. So. If there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. And the last one?
Last one is STV. Invoice number 90029846.
Dated on 11224. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payment to STV 90029846 dated 11224 at the amount of $2,666.
Second half.
Air discussion on this?
This kind of, this isn't the end, right?
What's that?
That kind of taps out the contract, right?
So the contract amount was $77,951. This earned date is basically.
Yeah, it's less than $300.
Like $300 something dollars.
Yeah.
All right, so any other discussions or questions? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both? So stay, so carry. Do we have anything else for the police station project?
Well, I did receive, I know we can't approve it today, which I think is okay, but I did receive a request from pavement for, from Action Target this evening, about an hour before we met, we started meeting. I think that it will actually be appropriate for our first meeting in February for consideration. Where they're basically asking for 90% of their, their total fee, so they'll have 10% left over with about a week left of construction. So I think, I think that would actually make sense to consider at our first meeting in February.
Yeah, I mean, just getting it today, it's, yeah, we
Yep.
We can't, we don't have the documentation on our hands.
Yes.
Anything else?
Motion, Dave, there?
Yeah, yes. Just one, one more thing, Dave, but you can jump on that in about 30 seconds.
You have another one?
No, just want to, um, let you know that as, we don't, we can't take any go at it because we don't have it, but the school projects, there's absolutely nothing going on right now and we don't have a forum to discuss that.
Don't we do?
We do, oh, is there anything for the school project? And we have nothing more in the schools, right, we're pretty much flat out net. With the, with the level spreader, there's nothing going on with that?
No, you know, and, and I haven't, I haven't walked down there, I don't know if Nancy walked down there either after all this praise and rain that we got in the last two weeks.
All right. Well, we haven't heard anything negative and I, you know, according to Dr. Carter's email on about the, the HVAC, again, there's no, no movement from the state in that about funding and also there's been no movement from the state on the audit. That's pretty much a done deal there, I mean, a standing weight deal. Does anybody from the commission have anything else?
Yeah, I, I have a question, if we could go back to STV on that. The services rendered were through the end of, end of the month of last year. So Evan, what's your thought as far as going forward on, on the January and the finish up of the project?
Official word is, I'm sure that STV will request a have a add service request. And I will advise them on how we, you know, I gave us, I gave a budget update, I'll advise them on what we have. what we have, uh, left over in our budget. And, you know, make sure that I think it's fair. Um, off the record, I will answer differently. And I'll do that in person, um, anytime you'd like. Uh, just off the record.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I, I'm just expressing my concerns, okay?
And, you know, not, not that we have been pleased, I'm just saying I, I just have some monetary concerns here. Yep.
I'd rather, I'd rather just let it, you know, play out for a while and see what happens.
Yep.
How are we looking with the budget to date for the project?
Sure, yeah, uh, pull that up. So with those two proposals, I was able to enter those actual numbers in for security and low voltage. And that brought our remaining contingency, if you remember last time, we were down into around 6,000. Now we're back up in over $13,000. So we have slightly more breathing room. Um, but you know, I, I, I don't think any of us are gonna, you know, be breathing sighs of relief right now, but you know, it's slightly more comfortable.
That's, right now, at this, I would think at this stage of the game for this project, that's probably a pretty comfortable number. Not out of the water, but it's pretty comfortable. Anything else, folks? Okay, what'd you say before?
I said, uh, I said motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Aye.
Thanks for stepping up, James.
Have a good night, folks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks a lot. Bye bye.